I'd like to call the July 14th of 2015 Business Meeting of the Salem Kaiser School Board to order. Kristi, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance first. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristi?
Rick Kimball?
Here.
Nancy McMorris-Otis?
Here.
Chris Brantley?
Here.
Marty Hyon?
Here.
Jim Green?
Here.
Paul Kylo?
Here.
Chuck Lee?
Here.
Okay, agenda modifications tonight? We have none, so we'll move on to the first item, which is Spotlight on Success. Superintendent Perry?
No spotlights tonight.
All right, we're on hiatus for the summer.
Yep, we are.
Next month as well, right?
Yes.
Okay. Audience communications. Kristi's checking to see if we have anybody signed in to communicate on agenda items. Okay, we have no one signed in. Did anybody want to speak on agenda items that didn't have a chance to sign in? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to our action items. First one is a real important one. We're gonna have swearing in of our new elected board members from the May of this year election. So I'll turn it over to our attorney, Paul Decopoulos, to take care of that chore.
Thank you. Let's gather by the American flag, over by Director Green. We'll start with Director Green, who's been reelected. Director Green, do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof? Hand raise your right hand. And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of School Board Director in and for the Salem Kaiser School District to the best of your ability.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And next, for Director Chuck Lee. Raise your right hand. Chuck Lee, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of School Board Director in and for the Salem Kaiser School District to the best of your ability?
I will.
Congratulations. And now, for our newest member, Ms. Hyon, if you'd raise your right hand. Marty Hyon, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of School Board Director in and for the Salem Kaiser School District to the best of your ability?
I do.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Welcome.
Marty Hyon, welcome to the school board.
Thank you.
And Chuck and Jim, thanks for coming back.
You bet.
All right. Okay, next item on our agenda is the election of Board Chair for the coming school year 2015 and '16. On both these elections of Chair and Vice Chair, we will not need a second, just a nomination. No second is required. And if we have more than one nomination, we will use ballots.
As Chair?
Yes, Jim.
I nominate Rick Kimball for Chair of the School Board for the school year 2015-2016.
Okay, and I'm gonna turn the election over to Nancy, so I'm not running it.
Are there other nominations? Seeing none, I will close the nominations. And, Chris?
I just have a comment. I'm gonna vote no for continuing the current chairperson of this board. And the reason, and this is mostly for Marty, because everybody else knows this, is that it is my perception, based on my readings of both the tenants of policy governance and the policies that this board has in writing for itself, that we are neglecting to fulfill one of our very important functions. And therefore, I will be voting no for any chairperson who does not promise to follow all the policy that we have as a board.
Any other comments? All in favor of Rick Kimball for Chair of the Board for 2015-16? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Nancy, for running the election. And Chris, thanks for sharing why you voted no, okay. Next is election for Vice Chair for the coming school year. Nancy?
I'd like to nominate Paul Kylo for the position of Vice Chair.
Okay, Paul is nominated. Do we have any other nominations for Vice Chair? Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for all in favor of Paul Kylo as Vice Chair for the 2015-16 school year. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, we have a unanimous passing. Kristi? Paul, welcome to the seat of Vice Chair.
Thanks.
And Nancy, thank you for serving last year as our Vice Chair.
Yes, I don't need to move anything.
No, they can stay put right now.
If you give me a Sharpie, I could.
All right, that takes care of the first three items. Next is the appointment of legal counsel. To give you guys some background, the law firm of Garrett Herman Robertson has been representing the school board and the Salem Kaiser School District since 1986. And Paul Decopoulos of the same firm has been working with the district since early 1990s. Board Governance Policy BG 10.2 requires the board to name an attorney for the school district to provide professional legal counsel and advice to the superintendent, staff, and the school board. The district has designated legal services as a class of contracts that are personal services contracts in administrative policy PUR-A001. This is consistent with ORS 279A.055/2. Personal services contracts are exempted from the Public Contracting Code pursuant of ORS 279A.025/2 and 279A.055. It has been practice of the school board to reappoint legal counsel at their first regular meeting, business meeting in July, and that is denied. Board leadership recommends the school board reappoint Paul Decopoulos from the firm of Garrett Herman and Robertson as legal counsel for the school board. So we have a recommendation from leadership, do we have a motion?
Move adoption of the recommendation.
Moved by Chuck, second by Paul. Any discussion or comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of reappointing Paul Decopoulos as our legal counsel? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, it's unanimous, Kristi. Paul?
I'd like to personally thank the board members for their confidence in me. It's a confidence that gets earned, and I hope to earn it this year for you. I looked in my drawer here and found a Dr. Seuss tag from 1999, so I have sat in this chair for some time. Thank you very much.
Well, thanks for continuing to put in for this job, because we appreciate your work. Okay, let's see. Let's move on to the next action item, which is the lease for the Career Technical Education Center, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Perry.
So, just as background, on June 10th, 2014, you approved the Memorandum of Understanding with Mountain West Career Technical Institute. You've also seen a first reading of this lease. Since the first reading, there's been a few changes of substance, but mainly they're in the title of the organization you're leasing from, rather than a sublease. So, this is a lease between Salem Kaiser School District and Mountain West Career Technical Center LLC. Mountain West Investment Corporation is a sole member of this limited liability company. There's no longer subleased. Mountain West made a decision not to structure the transaction in this way. The early access provisions that you saw recently were removed, as MWIC and Salem Kaiser School District signed the administrative lease that granted early access to the admin area. The sublandlord and subtenant obligations and landlord consent are removed due to the changes from a sublease. At this point, you have the new map in front of you, in a larger version than what you received, and it's our recommendation that you approve this final lease between Salem Kaiser School District and Mountain West Career Technical Education Center.
Okay, before we have any discussion, do I have a motion? Moved by Chris, second by Nancy. Okay, any discussion or comments? Nancy?
I just want clarification on the map. We had a work session at the Career Technical Center some months ago, and I just wanted to be clear that where my fingers is where we were sitting in this construction technology part, and that we walked through this manufacturing.
Correct.
And this room that was under construction, which is labeled Classroom, is that where there will be desks or computers? Are these people or computers?
The classroom, I believe, is the CAD lab area, so there'll be computers.
Thanks.
Jim and then Paul?
So, it's probably a question for legal counsel or for the superintendent, but part of the premises that we're not leasing is currently gonna be leased by other tenants. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, one of the questions I had, I was reading the lease, and under Section 7, we're required to maintain insurance. Has counsel checked to make sure that the other tenants have insurance as well? Because we're gonna be putting goods and materials in there, and if something happens on their side, i.e. a fire, and it switches over to our side of the building, are our assets protected by their insurance as well as our insurance?
We have not seen any lease with any other tenant. So, our expectation would be that there would be a similar lease with each tenant where our goods are protected. If that happens, we're going to be asking for not only information about that, but also issues relating to the security of our own students, what access the other tenants have to our student space. And our Memorandum of Agreement talks about an operational agreement that will address those issues.
And so, is it your belief then, Paul, that after the execution of this lease, you'll be requesting those plans and those documents from our landlord with the other tenants?
Right. If we're gonna be informed that there are other tenants coming in, we have to have all of this arranged before we will feel comfortable with having students in the same space.
Thanks.
Paul?
My, I have a concern, and my concern is philosophic, I guess. Since before June 10th, 2014, I kept hearing that we're going to be going into the Career Technical to get, to help our students earn more money when they get jobs, and they're gonna go to this facility and learn all of these skills. And I have supported that, and I think that's great. However, as I understand the lease, we're going to be using less-than-pervailing wage workers to put the facility together, which seems to me it's sending something of a counter message that, yes, we want you to go out and earn great wages when you finally get jobs, but we know the way to get around them. So I'm not sure that ethically that makes sense to me. So I'm still debating this in my head, so.
Chuck?
Yeah, as a person who's very involved in the Mountain West venture here, I just wanna make it really clear that I will not be participating in a vote or discussion on this matter, just to declare a potential conflict of interest.
Okay, thanks, Chuck. Chris?
I think I've already had my question answered, but, because of Jim's, but I was wondering why the, specifically saying that just this piece is gonna be leased, but then there's all sorts of verbiage all the way through the contract that makes it real obvious that anytime the district decides to add more programs, it's easy to move in and expand the lease and do all that kind of stuff. And I was just wondering why they did that. Now I assume that's because they want to keep the option open to be able to store beans next door.
Okay. Well, and also, we didn't want to be responsible for the space we're not using, so all the utilities get prorated for the space that we have, and that was another reason we didn't want to be responsible for the whole facility.
And ultimately, as we add programs, Mountain West's commitment to us is that they will construct the new program. So we wanna keep out of that work and do our work now, which is the education of the students, because that was Mountain West's initial promise to the district.
Any other comments or discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the recommendation from staff regarding the lease of the Career Technical Education Center. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we have five yeses and no's and one abstention. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our list, last action item, is the Negotiated Memorandum of Understanding, modifying the language of the collective bargaining agreement between Salem Kaiser Public Schools and the Salem Kaiser Education Association. Superintendent Perry?
So, background, we have one reopener on the contract with our licensed employees, Salem Kaiser Education Association, and the reopener was related to insurance. The association and the district have agreed and signed the proposed Memorandum of Understanding. The maximum district contribution towards insurance premiums for the 15-16 school year will be $1,185 per month. The parties agree to reopen discussions on district insurance contributions for 2016-17, and at this point, leadership is recommending that you will approve this Memorandum of Understanding.
Okay, do I have a motion? Nancy?
Second.
Move approval, second by Paul. Any questions or discussion? Chris?
The board plate doesn't say how this, what change this is.
$45 a month increase over 2014-15.
Which means that other employees in the district will also be getting that bump.
Correct.
I'm good, that was my last question.
Okay.
He answered.
Okay, we have a, any other questions, then? We have a motion and a second to approve the Memorandum of Understanding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No opposition, it's unanimous, Kristi. All right, adoption of consent calendar. In this area, we have, tonight, we have some grant budgets under business, we have personnel actions, as well as administrator personnel actions under personnel. Tradition that we adopt all the consent calendar under a vote. If there's an item a board member wants to discuss, we will pull that item, vote on it separately. Is there anybody, anybody wants to pull an item tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consent calendar as drafted.
So moved.
So moved by Paul, second?
Second.
Second by Jim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? It's unanimous, Kristi. Okay, then we're done with our action items. We have no readings tonight. Let's move on to reports. We have one tonight on monitoring report on executive limitation number one, the global executive constraint limitation. Superintendent Perry?
So this is the first of our 12 monitoring reports scheduled for 2015-16, and is designed to provide the school board with information to determine if the superintendent is meeting the criteria established within the adopted executive limitations. This is one that you have seen multiple years, and I did want to point out, rather than reading it all to you, an evidence of noncompliance. Our purchasing department monitors school and department procurement to ensure compliance with public contracting laws, and have reported a transaction which did not follow the district's procedure and was out of compliance with board policy. Purchasing received a requisition to provide payment to a contractor in the amount of $10,400. And in accordance with ORS 279B and district policy, PUR-P001, the acquisition of services greater than $3,000 shall be done through the purchasing department by means of a formal bid or quote process. The requested service has already been performed bypassing the quote process. There was a miscommunication between the department and the school regarding the source of the funding. Some staff believed that this was a donated project, when in reality, the funds were to come from the school's ASB account. ASB funds are subject to district policy regarding public contract, contracting, and we have taken appropriate corrective actions with the staff, as well as revising our work instruction to provide more clarity on the funding sources.
Okay. I'll remind the board that the executive limitations, the 12 of them that we have, are part of the superintendent's evaluation when we get to that point in our deliberations during the year. So is there any discussion or questions on this one? Chris?
Just a question of what Kristi just read, and that is, how does something like that get, how did it get discovered?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know if I have the answer, but our purchasing department is pretty good about picking up those things, but also an audit. Our financial audit could have been the place that picked it up, because we audit some of our ASB accounts. So I'm not 100% sure how this one got caught, but I could let you know that.
Well, the reason I ask the question is because, to me, it's more important that we catch things like this than it is that they, you know, you'd like them not to happen, but if they do, it's good to catch them, and I'm just, obviously, we have some mechanism in place that caught it. I just wondered what it was.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, looking for a thumbs up. We look for consent by thumbs up, it's not a vote, that this is an adequate report. Okay, I have consensus, it looks like. All right, let's move on to information items. You should have in front of you a calendar regarding our meetings. We still have the work session potentially July 28th. We don't have a topic, so it's likely we're gonna cancel this work session. But the summer planning session will go forward on August the 11th. Probably gonna be half day prior to the meeting. I'll be getting together with Vice Chair Kylo and leadership of the district to set up the agenda for that meeting. And we'll get a time back to you, so make sure you hold August the 11th for, a whole day for now, at least. I think it'll end up just being a half a day. Okay, that's all I have on the calendar. Any questions? Okay, audience communications on non-agenda items. Okay, we have three people signed up to speak. I'll call your names, and when you approach the podium here, you have three minutes. State your name and address for the record, and please take three minutes. We use some timers here. Orange or yellow light comes on, it means you have one minute left. The red light comes on, means we'd like you to wrap it up, and we'll move on to the next person. So first, we have Heather Altermat. And if I've mispronounced your name, please correct it for me.
My name is Heather Altermat, I'm from Kaiser.
Could you speak into the microphone, please, Heather?
You can pull it down, too.
You can move it to you. There you go.
Thanks.
My topic is to request to the school board to consider reinstating the year of science that was removed from middle school during a time of budget shortfall in 2008. As a recent graduate from Oregon State University, I'm a firm believer that students would benefit from more science and math. To be competitive in the 21st century, students need more high-quality, challenging classes and the hard sciences, not less. I'm appalled that the Salem Kaiser District took a year of science away from impressionable middle school students, and as a concerned community member, I would urge the school board to put it back.
Thank you, Heather. Next is Natalie Altermat.
My name is Natalie Altermat, and I live in Kaiser, Oregon. My topic tonight is to request the school board to reinstate the year of science that was removed from middle school during the time of budget shortfall in 2008. I appreciate you giving me three minutes of your time tonight, and I promise I will endeavor to be brief, be brilliant, and be gone. I am here to express concern about the double-language arts classes and less science for all middle school students. I've tried talking to teachers, counselors, and the principal at my son's middle, at my son's middle school for next year, and everyone I've talked to tells me this is a district policy, and nothing can be done at school level. So, I thought an appropriate way to change the policy might be to talk to the school board. I won't even speculate as to why a year of science was removed from Salem Kaiser District Middle Schools in favor of double-language arts. I'm just extremely concerned about the effect this will have on our students' education in science, technology, engineering, and math. Whatever problem the district was trying to solve, de-emphasizing science for all our students is not the answer. Middle schools will not even make exceptions for individual students, although I advocated for my son at the middle school he will be attending next year. Even when they knew he was tagged, that he met and exceeded all standardized tests, and that his fifth-grade teacher recommended he be placed in advanced math and science classes, his counselor and principal seemed determined that he will be part of the one-size-fits-all, lack-a-student-choice cookie-cutter education. Extra language arts at the expense of STEM subjects is not in the best interest of most students, and it is not appropriate for my son. Giving suggestions for out-of-school activities for students who are interested in science, while nice, does not replace the requirement to provide an appropriate education for all students during the school day. We are constantly barraged with statistics about how American students are behind students from other countries, especially in STEM subjects. My question is, how will our students be prepared if the district impedes their education and denies them the challenging subjects which will be critical in their future? This decision was made during a 2008 budget shortfall. I urge this school board to consider reversing the decision and providing an appropriate education for all students. How will Oregon achieve the Governor's 40-40-20 plan if our students lack instruction in exposure to and enthusiasm for STEM subjects? I thank you for your time, and I would appeal to you, not only as board members, but as parents and community members. I implore you to make every child's education a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. And next, we have Michael Altermat.
I am Michael Altermat, and I would like to ask the school board to put back the folia of science in each middle school grade. I think science is important to every child's education. Being a scientist is one of my future goals when I grow up and have a career. I think that not only a folia of science would help my education, but it'd help a lot of other kids' educations as well. Thank you for listening to me, and I hope this speech will help, will help make a difference in my education and others.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, that's all that we've had signed up to speak on non-agenda items. Has anybody wanted to speak on a non-agenda item, didn't have a chance to sign up? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to board reports on activities in the last month or so. Does anybody have any activities they want to report on tonight? Chris?
I'll just say that I went to both of the sessions, I guess they call them forums, that were put on by the NAACP and the Coalition for Equality and Mono a Mono. They were a whole group of people that got together and did those. I found them quite informative, thought-provoking. I'm very interested in, they're gonna have another session sometime this month to determine if there is action to be taken in the city of Salem based on what they, we heard at the first couple sessions. I'm planning on attending that as well if I'm in town, and I'll continue to go as long as they continue having them.
Thanks, Chris. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one, I'll go on to the superintendent's comments.
So I'm gonna make my comments brief tonight as well. Happy New Year. Thanks to our new board members, our new board member and for coming back, to both of you. We do have a number of new cabinet members in the audience tonight, and I thought it might be great if we had about three or four minutes afterwards, if I could do some quick introductions to the board, so you could see their faces and shake their hands. But at the table there is John Bate, our new human resources director, executive director for human resources, is his title. And then our other level directors and directors-level teams are in the audience there. teams are in the audience there. But again, I'd like to just do a quick introduction after we're all finished tonight, so you can shake their hand, and they'll be here, and every board member, they've...
Wanna bring them right up here?
Nancy, be nice. I am going to do that to you, Nancy, someday when, wait, I'm on CCTV, someday when you decide you're not gonna run for the board again, Nancy, we'll be right here. I was so comfortable for them. That wasn't even, anyway, if we could have a few minutes afterwards, I think it'd be great to introduce them to you. We're off to a great start, we already have hit the ground running to think about the start of school. I know it's only July fourteenth, but school feels like it's just right around the corner, so that's all for me tonight.
Okay, with that, I am going to adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you for coming, y'all.